Good evening, everyone. This is February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is the continued meeting of the Cupertino City Council from February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. That was our regular meeting of February, the second regular meeting. And so, Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call for this?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Yeah.
Mayor Paul?
Here. Great, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And so, Jim, can you remind me, were we on item number twenty or twenty-one?
Oh, gosh.
Twenty-one, Mayor.
Item twenty-one, okay, great. So, item twenty-one is a work plan update, and I believe that it was Katie? Or was it Jim that was supposed to provide our staff presentation?
I'll be jumping over that one.
Yep, that would be Katie.
Great, thanks. Welcome, Katie.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Katie Namora, Deputy City Manager, and I will be presenting the work program update. And so, as background, we are gonna go, or as an outline, we're gonna go through some background, have the Q-two update, as well as an update on the one last outstanding item from the last fiscal year's work program, and then going into some next steps. The work program was adopted in May. It has thirty-four total items, thirty of which are in priority order. As a reminder, there are quarterly updates provided at the dashboard at Cupertino.org/cityworkprogram. And at the end, when I conclude the presentation, I'll just do a quick preview for the public so they can see where it's at on the website. And so, as a top, the top ten items, to give you an idea of where we're at and where we're going, single-use plastics had significant outreach done in December. In January, the, and in December, oh, sorry, last year, but also in December, the Subcommittee of the Sustainability Commission considered the ordinance and the ordinance pieces. And then, in January, the full commission considered the draft ordinance and recommended that council adopt with certain amendments. For the options for ELI and BMR housing, the city issued its notice for funding availability for affordable housing funds that's open from November to February. Applicants received technical assistance during this process and also after, if they are awarded, funding. And we're determining the feasibility of an affordable housing project on city-owned parcels, and we've completed a parcel map, and we'll be presenting it to council in March as part of an update to receive direction going forward. As far as 5G, we continue to record all inquiries. We had a hundred and seventy-six posing installations, twelve questions or requests, and six in support of installations in question. Public works in the city attorney's office are establishing guidelines and an ordinance for council consideration in April. As for senior strategy, they completed the survey assessing resource awareness and need among Cupertino seniors, and they're analyzing those results to be compiled into a report to be made public and also on the website. Lehigh and Stevens Creek Quarry, we had a great discussion on this at the last meeting. And in addition, the county EIR process is anticipated to begin in March. In addition, three to four air quality sensors are scheduled to be installed near the quarries in March, and a public website with real-time sensor data is to be published in April. For our homeless jobs program, the pilot launched in October. Two unhoused residents have been selected for employment at jobs with West Valley Community Services assisting with the food pantry and with facilities. The city plan to end homelessness launched a community engagement process, which included community meeting, focus groups, and a stakeholder survey, or which will include all of those aspects, all to help inform and create the city plan to end homelessness. Memorial Park improvements, the city selected a design professional to prepare plans and specifications to go out to competitive bid to remove the existing ponds and landscape, the impacted area in the short term. The long-term plan will be part of the specific plan design. Competitive bids for construction are tentatively scheduled for release in March, with city council to award the contract in late April. Considering commissions and committees, this was conducted at the last meeting, so hopefully, we're all well aware of where we stand with that. And then, the shuttle bus pilot program also had an amazing update at the last meeting. And just to reiterate, services resumed October nineteenth, over a thousand trips in the second quarter, and ridership continues to grow. We do have the potential of adding two electric vehicles to the Via Cupertino fleet, and we're hoping that can happen. And the pilot is set to end in October twenty-two, pending the continuation or other decisions of council. And so, some other items of interest could be here. I'm going to show all of the items here, but I'm gonna highlight a few, and feel free to ask questions at the end. For Lawrence Smithy, the annexation process is ongoing, with completion expected as early as April. In December, the city contracted with MIG to complete the master planning process for the park. Current activities include site, environmental investigations, and public outreach planning. Extensive outreach is expected from March through November. Final concept design is expected to be completed in November. Environmental review is anticipated to be completed by March twenty-three and will be presented to council once complete. Mental health support, the mental health webpage is Cupertino.org/mentalhealth. It was published in September in alignment with the suicide prevention policy and provided resources specific to that. However, it's still being fleshed out, and more sites are going to be added and are being vetted to continue to provide other resources. And in October, the county presented to the teen commission mental health resources that are offered. And Bo Batino Youth Event also returned October ninth to connect youth and teens with local mental health resources. The teen commission provided feedback on the mental health website and programming in November. Another highlight is the municipal water system. This was brought before the council consideration, for council consideration in November. The RFP was advertised in December with a mandatory pre-submitting meeting in January, in which two retailers were in attendance. Responses to the RFP are expected early this year, followed by a recommendation for future operation for council's consideration. Pilot adaptive traffic signaling. Intelligent traffic management devices have been installed and are operational at four intersections. Data is being collected with analysis scheduled for March. Arena housing element. Staff has organized two joint study sessions with Housing Commission, Planning Commission, and City Council in April and May of last year. The Santa Clara County Planning Collaborative conducted a public outreach session called its Let's Talk Housing Initiative for Cupertino, Montessorino, and Los Altos in August. Thirty-five people attended the Cupertino session. The council study session was held on October fifth to discuss the timeline and outreach. An outreach began in December, and there has been outreach to the Housing Commission and Planning Commission. Additional outreach meetings are scheduled in February, March, and staff is preparing a progress update for council on March first. And in case anybody didn't know, the arena numbers were finalized in December, and Cupertino's share is four thousand five hundred and eighty-eight units. And for this last item, general plan authorization process. More feedback was provided by council for follow-up at the August twenty-two-one council meeting. This project has been delayed due to staffing challenges, and it's expected to complete in July twenty-two. Next steps, we'll continue to provide quarterly updates at Cupertino.org/cityworkprogram. Quarter three updates, we anticipate completing those updates in the dashboard in April, and then bringing that before council on a similar presentation as this in May. And the next year's fiscal work, fiscal year city work program is coming up in March, which I wanna kind of go over what, what we're thinking. And so, as we've done in the past, thanks to council's direction, we're collecting input from commissions from December to January, which will help inform this discussion. But we're thinking of meeting in early March to kick off this process, and council will review and adopt the goals for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And then, in addition, the council will be able to consider input from commissioners, staff, any public input, and even suggest your own city work program items for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. So, we're anticipating this being kind of the, the place in which new items come up, so all items can really be considered in the prioritization process to follow. And again, this is a little bit different than prior years, because we're trying to, some of the things that we did last year seem to work really well, so we're trying to work that into our, our process. So, in late March, early April, we will have council prioritize all the items that you've suggested. So, after looking at all of the items that are being proposed to you, council will select which ones they want to prioritize, and that will happen at a subsequent meeting. From that prioritization, staff will evaluate based on priority and then bandwidth available which items to propose for the next year's work program, and that will be brought back to, for council's consideration sometime in April. And then, there were also following that, so hopefully, that concludes the city work program process so that it can feed into the budget. And then, in early May, we'll have a prioritization for the CIT projects. And then, again, in May, we'll have that first study session for the budget. And then, in June, the council adopts the budget. And so, while this is my question slide, I'm going to stop sharing so I can shift over to show everyone where on the website the city work program dashboard lives. So, this is the website, if everybody can see it, stop me if you can't. So, if you go to our city, and then you go to city council, and you go to city work program, you'll be able to see the city dashboard, or the city work program dashboard. And you can see all of our projects, and if you wanna dig into any of them, you can click it, and click See Details, and it'll show you. And if this is too small for you, there's a little button on the bottom where you can open into a new window. That's basically the same thing, but just much larger and easier to see. And if you don't wanna remember where it is on the website, you can just type in Cupertino.org/cityworkprogram, as you can tell I go there often. And there you go. So, thank you so much, and we're here for any questions.
Great. Thank you, Katie. Before we take it to questions from council, let me go ahead and open it up to our members of the public. I don't see anyone with their hand raised, but I'll provide people a moment if they would like to raise their hand and make comments on this item number twenty-one. And as we're waiting for that, I'll go ahead and let everyone know that you'll have three minutes to speak. You'll need to have your hand raised by the time that the first person concludes speaking. And if you do, we'll go ahead and call on you for public comment. And again, this is item twenty-one, the city work program, which was continued from our February fifteenth meeting on Tuesday. Okay, great. I'm gonna go ahead and bring it back to council at this time. And I see that there are, there were no hands raised from the public. I'll go ahead and kick it off with a few introductory comments. And I wanna say, first of all, thank you, Katie. Really nice job on the presentation. And I think that, you know, it's, it's clear that a good amount of work has gone into not just providing this very informative presentation, but of course, you know, the dashboard and the update online with regard to all the various items that are on there. You know, like I said in my State of the City speech, you know, we're doing well, but we can always be doing better, right? And this is really just such an incredible template for, you know, doing better. Because really, it just has a whole, you know, full-fledged list. You've just shown us thirty items on that list, plus a few other items that were added. But at a point in our process last year, where we were no longer enumerating them in priority. And so, those other items, such as the housing home, and of course, is extremely important. Ten-four-fifty-five Torrey Avenue is also very important, because it implicates our office space issue over at City Hall. But, you know, when I look at this list of thirty items, and I think about where we were six years ago, I think that there's been a real sea change in terms of how we put forward items from the public, and particularly from council and our appointed representatives on the commissions. And so, if you really think about, you know, irrespective of who you are in Cupertino, if you think about a project that you, you're appreciative of, and one thing that I'll go ahead and use as an example is the Lehigh Cement Quarry work that we've done recently. And, you know, as I came into City Hall this evening and had a very brief conversation with our city manager, Jim Troop, he indicated to me that the draft of the letter to the county that we empowered on Tuesday evening has been written, and it's just about to be sent. And so, very briefly, before I got everything set up here, here in, in City Hall for this meeting, I managed to take a look at it, and it was very reflective of what we had discussed, you know, and really excellent discussion. But that also was a culmination of a process where, you know, having the focal point of the work plan and having that as number five was a, was a key point that we can keep in mind over the course of the year, and not just have something, you know, by which we can use as a guideline or a focal point, but also use as a, an ongoing justification and a reminder that this is a priority that we have. So, when I, when I think about how our process was going forward six years ago, we basically had no process for this kind of thing, right? We would hear complaints from the city, from the residents, and, you know, right around that time was when Supervisor Semidian, you know, relatively recently returned to the county from his, you know, fairly extensive stint in, in the state as, you know, our state senator. Also started an annual meeting of all the various agencies regulating Lehigh. But, you know, from, from Cupertino's perspective, we hadn't really had that kind of cohesive point of focus. And I, I would, I would credit the work plan with precisely, at, at the very least, I can say I can credit it with me keeping focused on it and being able to have a list, you know. Some people call it a very extensive list. In fact, it is really not that extensive of a list when you consider everything that Cupertino is doing and can be doing. But this was number five. This is number five, whether you call it a ten-item list, or a thirty-item list, or a fifty-item list, it's, it's a, it's a discreet, manageable list. And if you look at the top ten, and Katie, if you could put that up, the slide where you have the top ten items.
Yes.
Yeah, thanks. If you look at this top-ten list, I mean, this represents a fantastic success by the city of Cupertino, because we have, we have ten items here, all of which have had significant impact upon our public work. But also, because of this process, we've been able to focus upon it and point to it not just, you know, from the public, not just from the commissions or from the council, but also to have a list that, that staff can focus on along the way, too. So, let me jump off from Lehigh and Stevens Creek Quarry, and then talk about the very next item here, the homeless jobs program. That's something that Councilmember Willie had suggested and said, hey, let's try to have a pipeline. If you take the homeless jobs program and the fact that we had an October identification, and you look at the next item, the city plan to end homelessness, and you consider the fact that we had a kickoff with a consultant, with an outside consultant recently, I think it was last week, perhaps the week before, we're doing really significant things in this space that is somewhat unique. So, sorry, I'm just trying to see where the, yeah. So, i- it's, it's pretty unique in terms of how we're approaching it. And it's great to be able to hear, Katie, in your update, that the homeless jobs program had, you know, activity in October. There was something from West Valley Community Services. And, you know, when I was going over this for this item, I did subsequently speak to staff and say, you know, let's go ahead and bring this in for an update from WVCS. And I did subsequent to our Tuesday night meeting, because Councilmember Moore had pulled off of one of the, you know, accounts payable, I think it was ending January tenth, the fact that the homeless jobs program funding to WVCS was in there. So, you know, I, I think those two things in conjunction with each other really teach us, you know, a lot of, a lot of great things, and then we're doing great things. I, I would say, you know, in this kind of case, if something's happening significantly in October, it would be good to give us an update, you know, not just from a council perspective, but from the public perspective, because it is, it's really kind of singular. And, and, you know, frankly, it's, it's a special thing that we're doing in Cupertino. So, happy to bring that forward as, as the update in our next meeting on, on March fifteenth. City plan to end homelessness, kind of similar, although, you know, it was rolled out all at the same time to the public. You know, if it's on a work plan top-ten, I think it's good to kind of keep that mechanism of communication going. So, for example, this is something that I was talking to staff about yesterday as well. You know, realizing that it's a public city meeting, we can't all attend, or at least it's not advisable for all of us to attend a meeting like that, because it's not, you know, notices council meeting. But, you know, and particularly, and I don't wanna like, you know, make anyone, you know, like stand out on council or, or, you know, distinguished. But if, if you're the staffer working on this, right? And you know that a particular council member brought this forward, just a really simple, hey, councilmember, you know, X, we're about to start off the city plan to end homelessness, you know, plan next week, next Tuesday, or whenever. If you have any questions, please let me know. I mean, I, I think that kind of thing would really help those lines of communication and help the public through their representatives have a sense of, okay, there, there's investment. Because I know that there has been incredible amounts of investment, because Vice Mayor Chow and I worked on this particular issue, starting with, you know, trying to get the, get, get the commissions in lockstep with regard to the work plans. And, you know, a- a- and I, I hate that the genesis of this has all, has been like, you know, kind of, you know, really, really negative kinds of, you know, sentiments from the public. But I think we've been really successful in morphing some of that negative sentiment into something highly, highly, highly constructive. And so, you know, this was another one, and I don't know if you guys remember this, but someone had told, told us about, you know, oh, you need a, you need a code of ethics, because, you know, this and that is happening. And what we ended up doing is we went back and we said, you know what? Talking to city staff is not a violation of ethics, okay? We've had this conversation as a community about ten years ago. It's codified that we can talk to city staff to get information. But what we did find out along the way is that when we're talking about, you know, having various items from the community, instead of having, you know, back-channeling people, no staff, they talk to staff, and they add this, you know, we, you know, have elected representatives, let's go ahead and figure out a way, because we do have a lot of these commissions, right? And we do have a lot of public engagement, let's figure out a way to make a cohesive system out of it and define what we want as priorities as a community. Okay, so, so that came out of this whole, you know, we're basically getting, you know, and some people say we have political parties, but of course, we're apolitical in terms of our, you know, elections and whatnot. But, you know, some people say it came out of like a political kind of strategizing, right? Just to, you know, attack people on our council. But I think this morphed into something incredible, because at the end of this, you have a set of priorities, you've got the single-use plastic ordinance and the Mayor's Cup Challenge event. And, yeah, my Mayor's Cup Challenge topic is plastics, and I'm happy to partner with staff in the singles-use, single-use plastics ordinance. I, I think this is more of some lessons learned along the way. Let's, let's talk about it along the way. I mean, Mayor's Cup Challenge is really kind of like this ability for the community to talk about a, a social issue and look at it from like various perspectives. And that is happening. It, it has been bundled with the singles-use plastic, single-use plastics ordinance, which I'm totally at peace with at this point. But I think from a, from a kind of process-based perspective, it would be good, especially if, you know, this was brought forward by a particular representative of the public or member of the public, to kind of like check in and get a sense of, okay, does this make sense to combine this with the single-use plastics ordinance versus? But I think it's a good thing overall. The ELI and BMR housing, that is going forward. We're considering it very soon along Mary Avenue. The revisiting of the 5Gs going forward, our senior strategy. We have some really good senior affordable housing coming online. We have, you know, really good senior space coming online, you know, market rate over at, at Westport. We're engaged with our age-friendly Cupertino group. And I think that, you know, making sure that we have more of these types of interfaces and opportunities is critically important. Talked about six and seven, Memorial Park improvements are, you know, up there, that's going forward. New commissions and committees, of course, you know, we, we went over that this past meeting in the shuttle bus pilot program, bundled together with, you know, other really, you know, important transit issues. You know, if you look at our top-ten, I mean, just the top-ten alone defines an agenda that is, is really quite significant to any city. But then, if you could go to the next slide, Katie. Going, you know, from eleven to twenty, you actually have things, or eleven to twenty-two here, you actually have things that are extremely profoundly impactful as well, right? I mean, you know, I, I've taken on the idea of having more park equity, right? The, the park density equity. And, you know, Lawrence Smithy and the east side of town goes right straight to the development history of Cupertino. Lawrence Smithy was an unincorporated county, and so, Rancho Renegado was not county land. It was also post-World War II tract housing, which at one point kind of meant something socio-economically. But now, you know, like, everybody is hovering in the two-to-three-million-dollar range of their single-family homes, you know, if you're just a kind of a typical single-family home in Cupertino. But the fact of the matter is, if you look at the history, Montevista neighborhood on the west side of town was needed in order to incorporate, and the political engagement followed that historically. And you can see it with the, the beauty of the Blackberry Farm corridor, the park density in, you know, the western side of town. And so, I, I've been really clear about it the entire time, is that, you know, we're not trying to detract from any resources in any other part of town. We're just trying to make sure that we're keeping up with park equity along the way. Now, that has reflected itself in development of this, you know, this space and our ability to acquire it in the first place. I've said this in the past, that our prior city attorney's firm that we used was actually, you know, really effective in helping us get the Lawrence Smithy space. What I will say about Lawrence Smithy is that ever since we acquired it at the end of twenty-twenty, you know, we missed a couple of cycles in San Jose to talk about annexation. And yes, we did catch this last cycle, but that was a lot of hand-holding. This, this is a lot of personal hand-holding with regard to San Jose. And I, I appreciate that there's work and there's paperwork that needs to be done with regard to kind of de-anexing it from San Jose. We're moving forward with LAFCO. That's the next step to really formally get the entire thing, you know, fully into Cupertino. But I'm still working on it right now. A- and in the meantime, what's been happening with Lawrence Smithy is that we have a space, right? It's supposed to be used as a park. Along the way, it's been used as staging for, you know, city projects for, for, for public works. And it's also been, you know, subject to, to encampment, encroachment. And so, you know, I, I think if this were to happen on the western side of town of our city, you wouldn't see this happening, because, you know, traditionally, that attention is paid. So, so I, you know, I really see this as a project, a much-needed project, but also one that's reflective of a lot of the resource allocation of the city. I'm not trying to be, you know, redistributive. I'm not even trying to be redistributive in, in any way, shape, or form. I think we have the resources, you know, the Apple Park campus allocated seven-point-nine million dollars. That is all going Lawrence Smithy. The money is there. We have the land. We need to do the work to try to get this in. And so, that's why I was really surprised when I saw the, the timetable for Lawrence Smithy. If you're listening to these dates, you know, March two thousand and twenty-three, that Katie was reciting, you know, that, that's, it's pretty far out. I mean, the design to get done in November, that's pretty far out. But if we're gonna kind of push and push and push back, we need to be aware of the fact that this is three acres, you know, two, two-point-something acres of land in triangular space, right off the expressway. We need to be really assiduous about how we're stewarding the space. And in that vein, I've actually today, you know, reached out to the Santa Clara Valley Water District Board President, you know, Gary Cremmon. And I asked him, I said, you know, can you help us out with, you know, seeing if we can get volunteers together to pick up the, you know, the litter and the trash that is, you know, basically accumulated over the course of the last year there? And we got really good traction over the course of one day. And so, we're gonna try to And so we're gonna try to get a meeting together, um, with our city attorney, with our city manager, with the Santa Clara Valley Water District. And, you know, I'm gonna try to keep a, you know, compact set of volunteers. But that's also an issue, right? Like, like trash and litter, not just along Lawrence Smithy and along Saratoga Creek, but also along our, our freeways. You know, that's, that, that's not even here in the top thirty, but as it has turned into an issue. And so, you know, the thing that I'll close with, without going over every single one of these items, is that we also need to kind of keep in mind the flexibility required in order for us to answer to these like, you know, ongoing issues, such as, you know, as, as things are moving along, I was like, wow, you know, a- as it turns out, the reason we have so much litter along our highways is that in this tenure cycle, Caltrans didn't allocate as much as, uh, as they have in the past on a per capita or on a, um, per square mile basis to Santa Clara County. And that's now reflective of how, you know, not just Cupertino's highway, you know, side, um, areas look, but throughout the entire county. Because when we were talking about this at the VTA board meeting, and I was talking about, oh, like, you know, can we help with the, uh, volunteer efforts to, you know, try to get this cleaned up? And that's great, you know, if Caltrans is coming and saying that, because they can help train our volunteers and also give us the encroachment permits. But the rest of the elected officials from Santa Clara County, including, you know, Mayor Licardo and, you know, Supervisor Chavez, a- and, and the other members of the Board of VTA, they really got into it in terms of saying, hey, look, this, this trash issue along our highways, it's, it's serious and it's pervasive, it's everywhere within the county. So, you know, to, to have that flexibility is great as well, but, you know, these types of issues do tend to interrelate. And I think that for Lawrence Smithy in particular, if we're keeping, you know, an eye on stewardship, with regard to, you know, trash pickup, we can also keep an eye on getting people a little bit more invested in the space. Because of course, yes, this is absolutely, you know, along an expressway, we're gonna need money to try to figure out, um, and when we have the money allocated, but we're gonna, we're gonna need a plan, we're gonna need, you know, partners to figure out, what are the sound, um, you know, kind of, ki- ki- kind of, kind of sound options, given the fact that it's really quite loud there? Are we gonna plant rows of trees, are we gonna do something a little bit more, um, you know, i- innovative perhaps? You know, like clear partition of some kind? But in any event, I mean, right now, it is, uh, an attractant for, you know, potential encampments. The nicer we make it, if it's still empty and unstewarded, it's gonna become even more of an attractive. So, you know, these are the types of things I, I think we need to kind of think about over, over time for this, uh, particular item. But of course, it interrelates with the rest of, you know, the stewardship of our spaces. So, um, I guess, I guess really what I want to close with is the idea that if, if you're really taking a fair look at this list, it's, the existence of it is amazing, but the way that we have now coalesced and created a system that now is replicable over time, right? I mean, we were cursed with the pandemic in twenty twenty. All right, that, that was actually the first iteration of doing this fully, right? You know, and Katie, you can remember, you know, those many sessions that you and Vice Mayor Chow and I had sitting down, you know, and, and it morphed from, oh, well, let's get attacked and being like, you know, accused of not having ethics, which frankly, honestly, that's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. Like this group of like people that I worked with on council, you know, like that's just the stupidest thing. But to turn it into this and, and, and to be able to turn that corner and be able to work with, you know, not just, the community and our appointed, um, commissioners and with our staff, you know, to, to, to create this. I think this is a really transitional and pivotal and important moment in our city. So I'm really looking forward to going and looking a- at this in a couple of weeks when we have the next, you know, I, what I think is gonna be really the full, full-fledged sort of normal, so to speak, cycle of, uh, of this work plan. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's been a lot of pain points along the way. And, you know, I, I could go over all sorts of other things that have morphed from, you know, lemons to lemonade. But, but, but I, I, you know, th- this, this actually, I think, you know, if, if anyone's going and saying, well, you have this big work plan, it's, you know, this, it's, it's so, it's like, well, you know, my, 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 my thing is like, I have no idea what you're talking about, ton of work went into this. If you look at the incredible benefits that we're bringing forward to the community, to the discussion, to actually getting some things done, you know, th- this is, this is amazing, you know, you know, and I, you know, I was just talking to Jim as well on this, and he was pointing out that, you know, in his experience in other places, they're not really doing nearly as much. And I would say this is a huge reason why. And, you know, instead of pointing out like, you know, oh, we have all these commissions, like how dare you make staff like listen to the community? I think we should think about it this way, you know, we're Cupertino, okay? This is a, this is a city of seventy thousand people, um, that houses really amazing stuff happening. How do you leverage that? How do you leverage that to turn into, you know, something that is really singular, that, that, that meets the, you know, meets the standards on a civic level? And I, I think this is it, you know? And so, um, appreciative of this, looking forward to see what our next year, um, does. And I, I, I think it'll be an interesting morphing, going from one work plan year to the next work plan year. And it'll be, you know, to me, it'll be interesting to see how the priorities kind of, you know, evolve, uh, over time. So, um, yeah, that's, that's, that's pretty much what I have. And, and I, I guess I can go into like some more details on the other items, but, at this point, I'll just go ahead and hand it over to other council members. Anybody? I see Councilmember Willie.
Great. And, and your comments are music to my ears. The importance of the work plan items for the community. And that's what we're here for, and you just did such an elegant, uh, discussion of that. I hope city staff takes a lot of those comments. We're still learning, we never used to get these types of updates. The, the only time we heard about the work plan items is when we were preparing this next plan. And we and the community truly want and benefit from knowing how progress is being made on these. So, that being said, I'll, I'll touch on a couple of these. I think we're still learning and improving this process. I think this is only like our second, uh, work plan update, depending on how, how descriptive they've been. So the first one I'll start with, uh, for Katie, a good, good presentation. I think a little bit more detail on the top ten would really help. I'll start with the, uh, City Plan to End Homelessness. If you have, or the jobs program would probably be the one. If you have the descriptions of that work plan task, and probably not tonight, but then at the next one. So I said, when we're talking about it, putting the description up there so that we and the residents that are watching truly understand what is the task at hand, even though we might be talking about something minor. So if it is possible to put those, you know, up, I would start with the jobs, uh, program. If not, I'll just kind of mention my comments. So for the jobs, uh, program, the types of things that I think, while I put this, you know, up for the work plan, this was actually the, the brainchild of a resident that stopped in front of my house during the pandemic and said, you know, he would be willing to pay the salary of a part-time, uh, unhoused person if we could create a program. I mean, to me, that speaks to how the community truly wants to be a part of the work that gets done. So for the jobs program, updates that I could then pass on to them. So it took a while to get started, but end of October, as I understand it, the two individuals were, were identified, um, that would be good candidates for the jobs program. How's it going? How's it going now? Have there been any problems? Are the two that, um, were identified, have they stayed with the program? Do you have comments? And if not, these would be things for our next update.
Um, so, so, so John, I just wanted to, you know, let, let, sorry to jump in before you have a chance, uh, but, um, I'll, I'll move to you after this, Katie, but, um. So I think in terms of this particular item, we're going to be getting an update on the homeless jobs program, not just as a result of, you know, realis- realizing that, you know, that, that was your, you know, through a resident, now that we, 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 uh, have heard your description of it, um, proposal. Uh, we're also getting an update because Councilmember Moore pulled that funding item, right? From our last, uh, Tuesdays, you know, like a couple of days ago, um, consent calendar, right? I- in terms of the accounts payable. And so staff is supposed to come back and give us an update on that, right? And so, so those two things kind of merge into each other. We're gonna have to wait until the next, um, work program update in the next quarter, in roughly three months, right? We're, we're going to, I think, get that either next time we meet on March first or March fifteenth. So, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get more, you know, speci- I, I, I'm really interested in that information too, right? You know, it's like, you know, how did you choose, you know, people, right? Who chose the people, what were your standards, how'd you figure out what they're gonna do, you know? So it, it would be great to kind of, because now we're four months after the fact, right? And, you know, I, 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 I don't wanna, I don't wanna couch this wrong. I mean, I mean, staff does work, we have a good staff, okay? Staff does a work, um, and they do good work, but I think the communication is the key here, right? Because if, if you're the one bringing it up, right, if a resident is the one that kind of suggested it, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be October, November, December, January, February. And then Councilmember Moore pulls the counts payable and asks about this, you know, expenditure, West Valley Community Services, that gets it on our radar for an update, right, to, to get those specific pieces of information, so. Yeah, so, so point taken, and we'll hear about it earlier rather than later.
Okay, I, I'd still like to, to make a few comments on that one. The types of things that I'd like to share with the community, um, as we know them. And that is, you know, okay, I asked those questions, but then I would say, how, you know, for future answers, does it, you know, it was intended to be about a six-month, um, uh, work program for two. And then would be, if it's successful, you know, two more would be identified and continue on. Does it look like the ones that have been identified that are a part of the program, does it look like they're going to be prepared to re-enter the workforce at the end of that six months? Those are the types of things, well, maybe it's eight months, you know, whatever it is. Are the funds sufficient? We definitely don't want it to run out in the middle of things. So, so there's that one, for the City Plan to End Homelessness. Again, I'm kind of asking questions for the type of, of update I would hope that we get, things that the community will be interested in knowing. And for the, uh, 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 city plan, things that I would hope will come out of it. The, the kickoff webinar, wonderful, hundred and eight people attended. In the future, what I hope will come out of it is options by staff identifying them. Potentially, potentially. Safe overnight parking, emergency overnight housing, say spousal abuse and, and children. And all of a sudden, they're needing something in terms of an emergency. Transitional housing, well, we've already done some of that with a bode. And how can we have that at our fingertips as we need it? A proactive, uh, uh, approach to new encampments that show up. Proactive, reactive, I want to phrase it as proactive. When, when a homeless person in his tent shows up in our community, being proactive at, at the first sight, we go and try to, uh, see who it is, how we can help. Are there problems, are there other impacts of other people? So those would be the items for, for that one. For the BMR and ELI, you know, when we read the description, which if it was on the screen, it would really help us. You know, that's to address the, uh, the Mary Street and also the Outback or Simeon. That Mary Street has, has been in work. That, one of the first people that contacted me when I was elected three years ago was Orin Mahoney. And he said, John, I want to show you what we hope could happen to the Mary Street property. And so I would think some updates on where we're at, it is taking a long time. What's happened, you know, since the last quarter, since the last year? What's, what's gonna be next? When can we actually hope something will be visible? The five G, you know, part of the description of that is to be recording the community's concerns when they find out whether they did or did not get letters from the, the cell provider, that a cell is gonna show up in their front yard and they then notify us. Is it being recorded today, has it been recorded to, over the duration of this work plan? Dogs off the leash. Last council meeting, we had a couple residents talk about wanting to expand the dogs off the leash. Again, if we look at the description, the description is identify additional parks that could handle, perhaps dogs off the leash trial. So when we, we've got some residents that have not only spoken, they've emailed us. And what do I tell them? Yes, I can go look on the website and see what might or might not be there, but it'd be much better to, to understand that, wow, um, Three Oaks Park or, or, um, Wilson's Park or Creekside Park are being considered, doesn't have to be solid. And I'll leave it at that for tonight. But I am so happy that this is hopefully our new method of getting updates on the work plan items.
Oh, thanks, Councilmember Willie. Um, so I just want to let you know that, um, the ELI housing along Mary Avenue is , uh, teed up on, on the draft agenda for March fifteenth. So, you know, that, that, Katie, did you want to follow up with any of the items that Councilmember Willie had, um, talked about before going, before we go to Vice Mayor Chow and then I think Councilmember Moore had her hand raised too?
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. I will say, I did mention that the five G inquiries are being reported, there were a hundred and seventy-six in opposition, twelve questions and requests and six in support of installation. Um, and also I will hand it off to either, um, Assistant Director, for community development, for some of the other questions regarding housing.
Thanks, thanks, Katie. Actually, I do have Carrie Huesler here, the Housing Manager, to actually give you an update on, on Homeless's job program.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and council members.
Okay, great. Welcome.
Sure, I can provide a brief update on the homeless jobs program. This program is going really well, it launched, um, in the fall with the selection of West Valley Community Services as the consultant, the service provider to run the pilot homeless jobs program. The actual program itself went through an application process and West Valley Community Services selected two individuals to enter the homeless jobs program for, um, stability for employment. These were two individuals that were unhoused residents of Cupertino and they are now working in Cupertino, both at West Valley Community Services. And the benefit of that is they are salaried and benefit, benefited employees. One is assisting in the food pantry and the second individual is assisting with facilities. They have begun working on their professional development plans in January and job training is occurring from January through April and early May, while they continue their on-the-job employment at West Valley Community Services. This is a total of an eighth month, eight-month program, it's six months of job training and two months of, um, resume building, wardrobe, all of the, um, necessary supportive services to obtain employment. And West Valley Community Services has reported, um, satisfactory work, um, above satisfactory work. And the staff has been very excited to have these two folks, um, on their team. And the program will conclude in June of twenty twenty-two and the staff monitors this program monthly and provides technical assistance and, um, and things are going well and they're going smooth.
That's great to hear, I'm, I'm glad we don't have to wait until March first or fifteenth to hear that. I mean, that, that's wonderful. So was there any written update on this, Carrie? Uh, anywhere that we could have referred to, like ever since October, when this kind of started kicking off? I mean, because I know that, um, there's a dashboard with Katie, you know, kind of updating things. Is that something that is going along the way? And I'm not trying to, you know, I, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, kind of criticize going, looking backwards, but I'm, I'm trying to understand, like, you know, what our mechanisms of update would have been. Because I don't want to be unfair to you and say like, Um, because I don't wanna be unfair to you and say like, oh, well, you know, why didn't we get an update when one was online the whole time? But if one wasn't online the whole time, I guess the message would be, well, you know, now we know, you know, the point of contact with, uh, our staffer in case any of us or the public is curious on a particular item with update might be. So, yeah, the, the basic question was, has this, you know, ever since this sort of started, you know, kicking off in October, has that been updated on the dashboard or anywhere, you know, um, that, that, that we could reference?
These updates have been, um, they're current on the dashboard and I can take a look and provide more detail if needed for the next update.
That'd be great, yeah. I mean, you, you know, and, and I, I know hindsight's twenty-twenty, but this is such an interesting program, right? I mean, you've got county, you know, Measure A dollars. Um, there's, you know, there's stuff going on with Outback Steakhouse and the Simeon property, right? But suffice it to say, the county's interested, right? Support of housing is interested in, you know, getting that. And Measure A dollars really, i- i- if it doesn't come down to anything else, it comes down to this, right? I mean, you know, we, we've really, I, I think stumbled upon something that goes right at the heart of the, the, the policy and the intent. And, um, you know, the whole usefulness of, of these public dollars, you know, getting, you know, people from, um, you know, a really difficult situation, um, that probably can't get worse to one that, you know, actually turns them, you know, in, into a productive, um, you know, and, and, and actualized unit in, in, in our community. So, I mean, if we could somehow leverage this and, 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 and scale it, I mean, and I don't see why we wouldn't be able to. But, but what I do see is that, you know, we could kind of punt it around over time. Because, you know, there are connotations that come with, you know, certain types of housing, right? But we've seen what happens if we're not looking at it from, you know, kind of a, a, a direct perspective and, and taking, you know, I hate using jargon, but taking a proactive approach, right? I mean, a- a- and, and we, we have the elements that could really, you know, help, um, in place. There's the interest, there's the space, there are the dollars, um, you know, and certainly there's the awareness. And, you know, now we have a mechanism. It, it's not just about getting people into a temporary housing, right? It, we've actually gotten people, uh, in. So, um, very briefly on, on this update, was there any kind of, um, evaluation of options? Or did West Valley just seem so far and above, you know, a- and, and, and familiar with our local environment that should be, you know, the mechanism for getting this? So, so what I'm really thinking is that if we perpetuate this and we scale it, do we have a strong sense that this is the organization that we would be wanting to partner with? Or is there some other kind of, you know, benefit to perhaps going out and kind of, you know, expanding the search and casting the net wider than that?
Sure, at the beginning of this program, we issued an RFP and West Valley Community Services was the only, um, responder. And they decided to pilot the program internally themselves and create the program for the two new staffers. And they've indicated that this program would scale at about the same cost. So they are, they are evaluating the pilot just as we are working with them to run the pilot. So it's a parallel process of sorts.
I see, I see, okay. Well, um, fair answers. And, and, you know, I think just as an open question, you don't have to answer it or, you know, is, you know, i- if we were to put some more investment into it, would it go out to another RFP or, you know, how, how would that work? But, uh, let's go to Vice Mayor Chow, who has been patiently waiting. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow, and also for, you know, all of your work from the inception of this process to now, um, in, uh, making it happen.
Um, yeah, thank you for, I mean, this, uh, now is very structured. We get Q and Q two update and the website, the, the work program website is, looks really good. Although I just started to use it recently. Um, but since we are on the homeless job program, maybe I'll ask that question first. I recently looked at the county, uh, plan to end homeless website. And they do have a creating employment pathway program. And then they work with destination home. So I am wondering whether the county already has this type of program. And I understand there is also a federal program called the CalWorks. Or is it a state program? CalWorks, um, so that it require a certain work, there is certain working requirements for people receiving risk assistance. So shouldn't there already be some resource in the county who are doing the same thing and we can leverage? Um, since the county did receive thirty percent of the budget for this program. Yes, no, since the city only receives seven percent of the property tax and the county receives thirty-four percent. So what they are supposed to provide this kind of services, I would like to know what they do provide. Can we leverage what they already have?
Hmm, interesting question. Uh, you know, I would think Carrie would probably be in the best position to answer it from our staff.
Yeah.
We did some original research at the foundation of this program and I can take a look and bring some of that information back. We evaluated the CalWorks and I, I think we determined in order to, um, satisfy the council's desire to have a local job program, we would need local dollars to, um, employ Cupertino unhoused residents. And then one of our goals was to have the employment in Cupertino. We didn't, if I recall correctly, we didn't see a program that got us to that end goal. But there are other employment pathways out there.
What I mean, yeah, Cupertino City can create the positions, but the supportive services like, uh, the job skills and, and, and also the method to eventually find, um, a job with living wage. There are probably already, um, resources available in the county. Right, so I'm just wondering, we shouldn't be working a silo on this. Um, we should be assisting the county since they are supposed to be the agency that's really leading, um, any of this program. And even the city's plan for end homeless, it shouldn't be our plan. It should be how do we support the county plan? Because it is the county plan that we endorsed. So we shouldn't be creating our own program. We should be seeing what the county is doing that we can assist. And, uh, if we have new ideas, then, then should, we should, should propose the idea to the county. So they implement it and then we support that. Since they have the funding for that.
Uh, thanks, Vice Mayor Chow, yeah, I, 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 before I call on Chris, I, I think he might wanna respond. Um, I'm also gonna take as, as your comment to be, uh, pointing out that would be good to get metrics for evaluating efficacy, right? Because it's possible that WVCS is optimal, but it might also be possible that working with the county can deliver, you know, better value for our investment dollar here in, in terms of, you know, cutting into the problem and, and helping out more people, for instance. So, so, so that, that's, you know, I think that's really well taken, you know, um, you know, commentary in terms of, you know, how do we go? And, and it's, it's so true in everything that we do, right? Uh, like how are we evaluating efficacy on, you know, all of these like various levels? And, you know, fair questions, fair points. Uh, Chris, did you have anything that you wanted to speak to on this?
Yeah, yeah, I just, this is just a, a general reminder for the, 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 the entire council that, I mean, this is, this has been agendized as an update. So, uh, you know, and, and so it's certainly appropriate to ask, um, questions and, and, and comment on progress towards, uh, policy goals that council has already adopted. Um, to the extent that that raises, um, concerns or, or ideas of, from council about, you know, new policy direction. I think the appropriate response there would be to agendize that discussion for a future council meeting when, when, you know, that, you know, the ability to give that direction is clearly on the agenda. So I just wanted to make sure that, um, that, um, uh, that was front and center in people's minds. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Really great, great point.
So for example, we shouldn't be talking about new sites for dog off leash. That would be a new program item. But then I'm asking about the background for, um, the job program, right? Is that out of the scope?
So, no, that's, I, I don't think the background is out of the scope. I think to, you know, um, to the extent that you're suggesting perhaps a different approach of coordinating with the county, for example, I think that's appropriately, um, you know, would be discussed, that, that could be agendized at a future meeting. Uh, so it's just, just, just to be.
I guess I'm pointing out the plan to end homeless is supposed to be an endorsement for the county plan. So we should work with the county, that's the background.
Right, I, 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 I understand that. I just wanna make sure that people are, are mindful of, of the distinction.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you for the reminder.
Yeah, so for example, Chris, I mean, when Councilmember Willie was talking about getting updates on these other types of, you know, support services, I thought, well, it would probably be a good idea just to mention, you know, this could be a good thing for a future discussion, which we're gonna have very soon regarding a future item. But like, you know, for the support services, for instance, a lot of that has to do with anonymity. And so it might turn out to be better just to do individual council briefings. Uh, because you don't necessarily wanna like divulge the location of like, you know, certain, you know, alters to, to, in a, in a public context. So, I mean, you know, um, yeah, the point will take it. I mean, if it's, if it's basically new stuff, like get agendized or even get it onto the next work, what program, let's just be really, you know, kind of careful about making sure that we're parsing that out. So, did you have any other comments?
So a question about, uh, it's really nice to have all the status in one PDF document. Is there an easy way to generate that from the website ourselves?
Not currently, which is why we go through the process of creating it for you and attaching it when we bring it to you. Uh, unfortunately, you'd have to go screen by screen, um, in order to get a full printout.
Okay, that's fine. On, and for example, here is the page for the homeless job program on the website. And, uh, I think usually we can see that, okay, which face is completed? But then we don't really just know what exactly has been complete. But I see that the, the, uh, staff report actually has a good description of each of these items. So it would be nice if, if the Q two update in the staff report is put somewhere in the webpage, then.
We do publish it, uh, on the website. So if you back out of this and go back to all the way back in the top, uh, you'll see, oh, yeah, if you scroll down. Wow, that's an interesting view. Um, if you scroll down.
I see that you have.
And so we'll, we'll also be uploading this Q two update. But as Carrie mentioned, um, if there's more detail needed, we can provide more detail in the dashboard as well, uh, moving forward.
Yeah, and then, uh, here is the question someone asked me. So this is, uh, the work program when I selected the community development department. I see a list of projects and then the Rena one is the one I want, I'm looking for. I, it took me a while to figure out how to do this. But I find out, okay, click on the Rena one and here is the, the budget. So we allocated a million dollar and already two-third is expensed. And we have the green one, like three twenty-one thousand is left. And, oh, yeah, this is nice. So I hover over it, has this budget. So the question from, um, the community member is, we are just in the beginning of the housing element and how come two-thirds of the budget is already expensed? I'm guessing maybe we are prepaying the consultant and, yeah, we are just curious.
I can, I can speak to that. Um, so when we have it's expended slash encumbered. So when we enter into a contract, we encumber the entire contract amount to make sure it's reserved and that's kind of part of contract management as well, that, that money is dedicated to executing this contract. And so that's why the, um, seven hundred and forty-eight K is fully encumbered, some of which has been expended. Uh, I don't know if, uh, the Assistant Director of Community Development would like to speak more to it, but that is, uh, why that is in the blue bar. Uh, we can update that so that in our, in our, the actual, when you go into the details, we've updated that to be budget expended slash encumbered. Um, we, we missed updating that part on the first page, so we'll do that.
Oh, so this means expended encumbered, so it could be not expensed. I see, okay. Yeah, this is a great website, but it did take me a while to kind of figure out, oh, there is a detail I can get from clicking see details. And I saw other people's pages and then I tried to figure out how to get that.
We do have a little bit of a how-to document, um, towards the top of, of the page in our narrative, uh, where it says click here, if you scroll down a little bit, uh, right there.
Oh, here, okay, great, thank you. And another question is, um, maybe this is not appropriate now. So one item you had was a leftover from last year, that's a, uh, general plan authorization. But then I noticed that the pre-approved ADU that we thought is finished from last year, we had, uh, finished the process, but there is only one vendor available right now. So I hope to get an update on what effort we are making to reach out to more vendors. I see St. Jose has ten vendors. Um, and then for senior strategists, um, I know that we have done the survey and you will give an update on the survey. But I recently heard Lascatos formed the, uh, senior, um, service task force. And then they have decided to spend half a million dollars to provide those services. I'm, I'm not, I don't have the details on that yet. But I have recently looked into, do we have adult daycare? It doesn't seem to have adult daycare that's nearby.
Live Oak is an adult day healthcare.
So I, hmm, so I wonder.
Live Oak, anyway, yeah.
Um, yeah, so I wonder, um, what do we expect to, to? What would be the next step? Because like aging at home, a lot of our seniors probably are aging at home and many people are taking care of their own parents, so family caregivers. And I see, uh, Otto has a network of seniors helping seniors who are, someone, uh, need a haircut. You can see that a senior is go doing a haircut in someone else's home. And then I see LA has, um, jobs program for seniors who are fifty-five and older, but they, they still need income. So these are things that I'm seeing that other cities are doing. So I wonder, what's our next step after the survey?
Okay, thanks, Vice Mayor Chow. And I see, um, our city manager as well as our Parks and Rec Director have, uh, their cameras and for Jim, he has his hand up. So Jim, did you wanna speak to Vice Mayor Chow's comment?
Actually, I was just going to, um, Joanne's there, so I was gonna ask our Parks and Rec Director, Joanne McGreeney, to speak on that.
Great, welcome, Joanne.
Good evening, um, Council. I'm happy to talk about it. We, um, have five categories with the senior strategy that we're analyzing. And, um, I would just say that it's a robust amount of information that we're working through in order to analyze, um, how we would address, um, each of those areas. And I just wanna remind everybody, it includes technology, resources, housing, food supply, transportation, and then mental and physical health. So these are meaty topics, um, just on their own. And so, um, just working through the data analysis, we had a great, um, turnout for the, um, for the survey. We had, I think, almost four hundred and ninety some odd people respond. So it's just a lot of information to go through before we start our plan as to how we, um, are going to tackle addressing it. But, um, we will be gathering that information and analyzing it.
So did the survey touches the whether people need, uh, aging at home service, adult care, family caregiver? And because those are, I don't see mentioned.
So that, it asked about different housing resources. And so it was broken down to if they were aware of the different housing resources that were available. Um, and so that is part of the analysis.
What about supportive services, Joanne? I think Vice Mayor's asking about, you know, like adult day healthcare and other types of.
I think that was all included, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, um, okay. And then, uh, for Via Shatoh, it's, um, it's great to get update the, what's the outreach plan? Now we are in the second phase, right? Um, someone is suggesting that we should do, um, some workshops in senior center or schools so that people know how to use the app. So do what, what's our outreach plan for the second?
Is Chris here? Yeah, he is. Hey, Chris, welcome.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Um, for Via, we are, um, currently doing, um, a lot of outreach and will continue to do so. Um, some, the city's taking the lead on and some Via is. And, um, we will certainly go to, um, any special events. Um, we've done some outreach, uh, via the Cupertino scene. We've done a couple of articles in the scene, but moving forward, we'll do more events as we're able to do more in-person events like the farmer's market. Um, Earth Day, we plan on having a presence with a van at that, uh, event. And, um, at the. And, um, at the senior center as well. And we'll, any suggestions that come in, we'll, we'll be happy to, uh, um. To hear and, and participate in when we can.
Hmm, okay. So, yeah, maybe, uh, it maybe do a virtual event for school parents. And middle and high school parents. Um, I see that Monta Vista has really big numbers last night, but now after the pandemic, it's lower. I wonder if they don't know about the program or what happens. Yeah, anyway.
We will, we will definitely do that. We've been working with our Seafroats to school team on trying to get the word out to, to students. And we'll, we'll, we'll definitely do some type of, uh, event that targets, uh, Monta Vista.
And for Vision Zero, um, I happen to speak to a bike head commission. I think this is one project they proposed, but they said they didn't do much about that this year yet. So I'm just wondering, what's the progress so far? What's the next step?
Uh, yes, I, I can take that. Um, good evening, uh, Councilmember Chow, uh, David Solomon, Transportation Manager. Uh, yes, the, a couple of the bicycle pedestrian commissioners and I have formed a, a subcommittee. I've been meeting, um, monthly or so for the past few months to outline a program for, uh, Vision Zero. And we've, we've come to the realization that, um, a lot of the work behind a Vision Zero program. Uh, we're actually doing currently with our L R S P, Local Road Safety Plan Program. There's a lot of overlap between the two. And so we formed a game plan moving forward that we are going to develop a scope of work for a consultant. To take, uh, kind of the final product of the L R S P, which will be completed in about four or five months. And, uh, do a little bit of extra work to turn that into a, a full Vision Zero program. And staff is gonna be returning to council with a budget request for the next fiscal year and an extension of that work plan item. So that we can, um, hire consultants to, to complete that Vision Zero program.
Okay, so the, the real self-safety program, it wasn't started as part of the Vision Zero program. Um, but now this will be combined?
Uh, there will be separate programs, but there's a lot of parallel between the two of them. They both involve a lot of data collection, a lot of identification of high collision corridors, high collision intersections. Development of solutions to, um, enhance the safety. The, the Vision Zero goes a little bit further in that it establishes milestones and goals, um, into the future. And, um, and so we're gonna need some assistance to, to do that once the L R S P is completed.
So for the road safety program. Uh, so that's a staff initiative. We don't need the consultant for that, so.
We have, we have a consultant for the local road safety program. Yes, we received the grant for, uh, for seventy-two thousand dollars from the state. For the local road safety program and we have a consultant working on that, um, currently.
Oh, okay. So the, Vision Zero can build on top of that, but it will be a separate program, I see.
That's correct.
Uh, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut in, um, because I, I did, um, mention on Tuesday night that my expectation is that this is gonna be half an hour. Um, an hour and a half, so, um, or rather an hour to an hour and a half. So hold what you have. Let me go to, uh, Councilmember Moore at this time, uh, to provide, uh, that opportunity. And, and Councilmember, you're shaking your head. Did you, um?
Uh, Councilmember Way can go ahead of me, that's fine.
Oh, Councilmember what? Uh, okay, Councilmember Way, did you have any comments or questions here?
Sure, I'll be very brief, uh, cause it's almost eight fifteen. So I am very, um, impressed with the staff's work on the, at least on the top ten. And then I think we have touched some of the, um, other issues that, uh, we're working on. And I understand we have a lot of detailed questions. And I do believe that when the priorities are being processed, that we get more information out of it. So, uh, so I don't have any questions. I just wanted to tell the staff that I understand. You know, we have a lot of, uh, you know, we're, we're very passionate about, about a lot of things. And I really think that the staffs worked really hard, um, out of it. And I'm especially impressed with the, uh, uh, the, uh, senior strategies, um, of the surveys. And I think, um, a lot of work will be report back to us. And so I, I feel that the homeless programs that we are piloting with the, uh, West Valley Community Services. And we, we report back to see how successful it is. Uh, do you understand that the county has, you know, programs and they have money? But this specific serves homeless people in Cupertino. So, um, I'm very, um, interested in knowing the, uh, final results. And if we have, um, more funding, if the program is successful, that's service specifically homeless people in Cupertino. I think that might be a good way to, uh, continue that. So, and I wanna say that the Via Shuttle program, I signed up myself. And so, uh, I'm really gonna try it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's a great program. Thanks, Councilmember Way. Um, Councilmember Moore, did you want to, um, take some time at this time?
Um, sure, uh, just, I, I, I'm not sure where to put this, but, uh, because we did, um, all approve Measure A. Uh, from the county, I'd like to know, um, what they have actually done for, for homelessness. And if in that, um, Measure A Affordable Housing Bond, because it is supposed to work on, um, homelessness. And chronically homeless, um, people within the county, I'd like to know if there's some language in that bond. That would ensure equity across the county so that, that Cupertino is, um, receiving our fair share back. And, uh, I, I wanna agree with the, um, the Vice Mayor, uh, with regards to, uh, having signed on to the county. Um, task force to end homelessness. And I'm wondering, uh, a little bit about, uh, I, I actually would have preferred. That the, um, the conceptual ideas for how this money would be spent were brought to council before the plan was implemented. Um, because to me, uh, and maybe no one else, I, I didn't see anyone else se- uh, seeming to, uh, um, ha- take issue with it. But I have a little bit of a problem with us taking our money and giving it to the, um, organization that is then hiring. So I had this envision that we would be training, uh, individuals, that they would be going through some training program. To, uh, earn a living wage so that they would be able to afford to live in the area. And, um, I've also heard something, uh, to the effect that we, um, our, our money is also going to house these individuals. So it's not just that they got a job, there's some housing somewhere. So I'd like to know what component of, of the two hundred thousand dollars, um. Is going to housing. Uh, and then, um, the reason why I kind of like having the, the county be. Uh, the organizer of, of this type of a project is they can track, uh, recidivism rates. Uh, are the individuals able to maintain a, a viable career afterwards? Um, uh, did they slip back into homelessness? How did that happen? And how, how is this program, are, are we, um, now es- essentially signed on? For another two hundred thousand dollars, uh, at the end of this, um, trial period? What's going to happen? Um, because we have been funding, we're giving money to West Valley Community Services. Who've hired these individuals are, is, will they be taking them on? Is there employees and paying for them? Or, or are they going to require grant funding from us, uh, in the future? Uh, all of that, I'd like to hear a, a lot more about this program. But the, the main point is I really wish this came to council, so this could all been spoken about, because now it's after the fact. And I, and I hope that we haven't created something that we, um, are going to need to long-term fund. Uh, and have some concerns there. Um, I pulled up very quickly, uh, the City of Pleasanton's work plan. And they had their several items that they, um, sort of general items which they have for their work plan. And it made me think that, um, for me, I'd like to see our work plan items, um, bucketized. If you will, into, um, the general plan guiding principles, which we have, uh, at the start in chapter one. We have, um, twelve guiding principles in the general plan. And I'd like to have a sense, uh. So for each one, where the, the items that we've selected fall into our general plan. And then I, from that, we would get some sort of a sense for, um, where we're, where we're spending our time on our work plan. I, I think that might, um, be interesting. Um, so for, for one, um, item eight, embrace diversity. So do we have things in our work plan which are addressing this? Uh, support education, do we have things addressing that as well? So we might find that we, next time, we wanna tweak our work plan in order to hit some areas which are the community identified. In the general plan that maybe, maybe we're, we're missing. Um, just, uh, something we could talk about. But I'd kind of like to have a little discussion before we do the next work plan item. Where we bring up the, the future items we'd like to work on. Um, uh, for instance, I had. Previously brought up the domestic violence shelter, which did not get into the list of thirty as far as I can see. Uh, so perhaps that fits into one of these buckets on the list and, um, can be addressed in the future. But if, if the rest of council would like to talk about the process, uh, in, have one little study session discussing that. Before we get into, let's, let's, each one of us suggest our items for the next work plan. Um, it, it might help just to kind of smooth the transition in the process. And then also have some explanation before that next meeting for how new projects get worked into the existing project list. Um, just a little process, um, review, it's good for the public as well. So if new, new things that people wanna bring up, um, can get put in, and they, everyone understands how that process works. Um, so that we don't lose, lose things, um, or ask for too much, something like that. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Um, yeah, no, the, these comments are, you know, I often listen to our council comments and I. Kind of lament the fact that we don't have more of a mechanism, um, when we're working live to. To engage in a dialogue, you know, from a, you know, from, from the, the, the five different council members. I mean, I, I would really like to respond to a few of your points, um, but I wanna make sure that we're kind of evenly, uh, distributing. The, um, opportunity to, to, to speak to council. So we're at eight twenty-one now. I, I think the general reform idea has been pretty, uh, pretty effective on this. Um, and, um. Vice Mayor Chow, let me go back to you because you, uh, were, uh, in mid-stride, it seemed, uh, when, uh, I, I transferred this over. To the other council members hadn't spoken. Um, so just, um, would maybe four minutes help you out? I mean, if we're.
Yeah.
Let, let's try to, it's eight twenty-two now, so I, I wanna be able to have a few minutes left, you know, near the end there.
So actually I just had one more item, but, um, but some information, um, in the county. At Destination Home, I think the county contracted with them. They have a job program that has connected the. One hundred and fifteen formerly homeless people to full-time employment. So what are they doing? We don't even know. We are creating our own thing. So that's, that's something I think we need to leverage and figure out. Um, yeah. And then, um, the last item is housing element. I, what is the timeline? Because I heard recently that H C D changed the, uh, their interpretation of the deadline. It used to be the deadline is January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. We need, just need to submit the plan by then to H C D. And then there will be back and forth since they certify a few months later, like in two thousand, uh, fourteen, fifteen. They certified in May of two thousand fifteen, even though the deadline is January. But they are changing that. They are changing that to, they'll, they have to certify by January thirty-first. So I'm, so I'm a little concerned that then that means we need to submit to like three, four months before. So we have that time to back and forth.
That's a good question. Uh, that sounds, yeah, from our, from our current, uh, attendees, that, that sounds kind of like a city attorney question. But I see Albert has his camera on. Did you wanna speak to that as well?
Yes, Vice Mayor Chow, actually, I do have, uh, Luke Connelly here, our senior planner, to give you an update on that.
Okay, great. Welcome, Luke.
Hey, thank you. Very nice to be here. Um, and, uh, yeah, on the question about the, the deadline. The deadline is January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three for certification by H C D. Uh, there is also, there's a hundred and twenty-day, what we call a grace period in which to get the, the element approved. So the, the goal really is on this project, and I know this is gonna be agendized on the March first and the March fifteenth city council meetings. There's also a, uh, planning commission meeting next Tuesday on February twenty-second to discuss the housing element update. Um, the, the goal really is in this process is to work closely with H C D. Because they're going to have multiple reviews, which they've made very clear, um, of periods of ninety to sixty days. So you can expect at least two, maybe three review periods. But, uh, the question, yes, what is the certification date for H C D would be to have it done by January thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three. With a hundred and twenty-day grace period, which would put you out to the end of May, which would mean, uh, and without getting into this too far. You would have a one-year period to then do any zoning changes that would be required for the housing element update. So, um, without getting into it beyond more than we're going to on March first, that's sort of the short answer on this question.
Okay, so Luke, let me, let me see if I'm getting the timeline right. January thirty-first of next year, so you have certification, a hundred and twenty-day grace period. Um, and then another year after that, in order to get the zoning done? So are we talking about, about a year and four months out from January thirty-first to really truly complete it? Or are we looking at another true final deadline?
In terms of the zoning, that, that's correct. Would be the one year from the May deadline, the grace period.
Okay, so May twenty-twenty-four is what it's sounding like. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, and, and in terms of the zoning, but certification for the housing element itself would be occurring in May of twenty. May twenty-twenty-three would be the end of the grace period.
End of January, got it. Okay. Oh, wait a second.
And what's the target date now to have the council approve? So we can send the first draft to H C D.
I, you know, I honestly would not wanna put a hard date out right now because we're working with our consultant on that. It, it would be tough to estimate. Uh, the only thing I could say is our goal is to get a draft to H C D by early summer. To get it in their hands, knowing that they're gonna have an extensive review period.
Early summer.
Soon July, something like that. It could be moved up to May, July at the latest. But I, I really wouldn't wanna get into specific dates right now because we're so early in the process. Until we get the sites inventory done, um, it's really hard to estimate with any accuracy.
Okay, so do we, would we have time for an E I R? No, we won't have time for that.
Uh, we do. The critical path on the E I R, the, the sites inventory established. Which is what we'll be talking to the planning commission about again next Tuesday and be coming back to you in March. Um, until the sites inventory is defined, it's, we can't really get a project description, which is the basis of the environmental impact report. So we need to get that done. Um, the, that should be something that can be accomplished within the overall timeframe of the housing element.
Hmm, okay, great. Thank you.
Great. And, and I just, I wanna clarify one date, Luke. So January thirty-first and then a hundred and twenty-day grace period beyond that. That's correct, right? So we're really looking at the end of May, um, for twenty-twenty-three.
That's correct. And, and that is really contingent on, if you go past the grace period. You then have a shorter time to do the zoning changes.
Understood.
So, so that's really it. And I believe this is what Cupertino went through in the, in the previous, the, uh, fifth, uh, housing element cycle.
Yeah, that's right. We did. Yeah, we went out to May of, um, what was it, like fifteen?
Yeah, May nineteen. So I thought if we certify in time, we have three years to do the zoning. If we don't certify in time, then we have one year.
That is correct.
Right?
That's correct. Yes.
So if we, if we certify in time, we do have three years.
You have three years if you're for, uh, jurisdictions that are late, that goes down to one year. That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification as well, Vice Mayor Chow. Um, Councilmember Moore, you had your hand raised. Did you want to follow up on any item here? Very.
I I was going to ask about the EIR. I'm just, I just pulled up Elk Grove's EIR for their housing element, just as an example. And I think I've I've got heard enough of an answer between what Luke said and what I'm reading here. I am concerned, just put this out there, I'm concerned with our EIR moving forward because all of the surrounding cities are having this high densification happening. And I'm concerned that our project with the surrounding cities projects will essentially overwhelm our infrastructure, our sewer in particular. And and I'm concerned that our EIR will need to look at the environmental impacts of increasing the infrastructure capacity. And and it's, to me, it's, it is foreseeable that this project will result in other projects needing to to happen, especially in light of the the huge RENA numbers we have surrounding us. And so I'm hoping that all of that is is being considered. And I think perhaps our our city attorney wants to weigh in on that. But I think it could be a quite complicated EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore, and Chris, or
Yeah, so, you know, so I I think as as Luke indicated, I mean, the the first step towards really starting the environmental analysis is to have, you know, sites inventory and project description. You're correct that that cumulative impacts is part of the analysis of any EIR. And so, given that the same type of of rezoning is going to be happening in surrounding communities, I would think that's something that we would look at in preparing the EIR.
Yeah, no, this is a great, great and responsible comment, of course. I mean, you know, this is one of the kind of kick the can politics, right? So, you know, hopefully, we can, we can get it right. Because if if a generation doesn't get it right, it just kicks the can down. And, you know, we can talk all about gaslighting and sandbagging and profiteering, but at the end of the day, the suffering is going to be done eventually by somebody. So so, you know, thank you for the comment. Councilmember Moore, you still have your hand up, did you want to add on at this time?
Yes, just a tiny bit, because you actually said something that is is interesting, the kick the can down the road part. And it's my understanding that we perhaps can't kick the can down the road with those environmental impacts and the cumulative impacts. So that's an interesting, interesting quote, actually, so I'm I'm glad.
It's an analogy that I think applies to so many things. I mean, you know, I won't even get started on it. Chris will say it's well outside the scope to talk about social security and, you know, maybe global warming. But yeah, I I will notice that, you know, we we have that item on there, the climate action. Anyway, so thank you very much, everyone. This has been comprehensive, great to meet, you know, some of our people on our, you know, city staff. And I think this is a good conversation. But let's go ahead and close out this item, excellent update. And we'll go on to the last item on our regular agenda, which was not enumerated, but has to do with future future, future agenda items and council comments and staff comments. Councilmember Moore, did you want to speak to that? Hopefully, you don't want to speak to item number twenty-one, but okay, great. So anything in terms of council comments or future agenda items?
Well, I think this might actually have been mentioned at a previous council meeting, talking about the Beta Brothers and I believe it's Canyon Crossing approvals. And what was brought up were issues with our general plan language, which we are probably all really familiar with now. For instance, this one line in interpretation of residential may only be on upper floors and how that was interpreted. And so I, we did see, I did see general plan in the work, the work plan, but it didn't look like it was something that would address this specific issue, which is with regarding the commercial, commercial slash residential land use designation and getting that language brought to council, discussed what what we really mean by it, and then fixed in the general plan. So that that's my one item.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. And, you know, without having a discussion about it, I I will say that I was literally just talking about this with with our city manager earlier this evening as well. So Councilmember Willie, then Vice Mayor Chow.
Well, I'll start off by saying, hey, we'll second Councilman Moore's request that that be put on our agenda, future agenda. Then the two that I'll bring up, you know, at the last council meeting, we had residents that brought up the fact that there are vacant properties and we have a housing shortage. And I've since seen that San Francisco is actually addressing vacant properties. So I would like a future agenda to look into what we could do to spur vacant housing to be rented out. So that's one, hopefully, somebody will second that. And the second one I would like to propose is the current developer approvals are good for ten years. And as we've seen with the Hamptons, nothing's been done. I would like it to come back to the, an agenda item come to us so that we can consider changing that ten years to something that's going to move things along rather than creating entitlements that become more or less a future for developers. You know, should they want to sell the property and and claim that it's worth more than than what the market rate would be? So that's the second one, an agenda item to look at changing the duration for project approvals. Residential, it's twelve months, so thank you.
All right, thanks, Councilmember Willie. I, you know, I will say, the entitlement period, I think defaults at five. As part of the DA for Hamptons, that was actually extended to ten. But once they pull permits for, you know, the item for 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 for, you know, increasing the number of units, it would be seven million dollars to our civic center, I guess. Depending on how you interpret the conversations, it's either the library expansion or the civic center, you know, which, you know, we're already taking care of the library expansion. But so so that was the deal in the development agreement. I think the default entitlement period, it's either five or three years. And I think, you know, Chris could probably speak to this as an informational issue at this point.
Yeah, we also have Marina that has gone nowhere, and it's been over five years.
Yeah, I think they're coming back, right? And Chris, did you want to speak to?
Yeah, thank you, I just wanted, this is just a point of clarification, that, you know, the default period for a development permit is is two years, and it can be, it's extendable. There, you know, in the cases where, you know, there is a development agreement, often the the term of the entitlements will be longer than that. But, you know, that development agreement has to come to council and be, you know, specific, that longer term has to be explicitly approved by council. So so some of these very longer term projects are typically a result of a development.
Wow, I didn't realize it was that short. I I thought the default was longer than two years. Okay, great. So let me go on to, do we call on you, Vice Mayor Chow? So, no, we call on Councilmember Moore, so Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah. Okay, so there are some things that I heard at the mayor commission meeting that I so that the reason that the DOLA advocates come to the council meeting on Tuesday was it was brought up, they have been coming to the Prox and Rec Commission. I said, oh, we have never heard of anything about that, they want to expand. So and then then I said, okay, we need some. But then the council have been hearing about other things that may be related to Prox and Rec. But Prox and Rec will be hearing some things that we don't know about. And now finally, oh, they are coming to us because I happen to mention, oh, you need to, we don't know. So how do we communicate this? If we, some people have been written, writing to us, but then how do we make sure that the individual commissioners hear them too? And if the, if some people have been speaking to a commission, how do we make sure councils will hear that? So we probably need to figure out a way that a community member doesn't have to speak to both to advocate for something. And another issue is they are working on their work program, and they are not sure how would they advocate for big patents that might need a higher budget item. So I
Okay.
And anyway, that shouldn't be, anyway, one thing I want to mention is I this is a potential, this is a request that I emailed this to the staff already. Because we consistently have been, community members coming to the council meeting or the planning commission and saying that, oh, you know, build like point five percent of housing. So I brought this data from the city website, but it's buried very deep in the webpage called Housing Documents. And this is our performance, our location was a thousand. And we we approved almost thirty-five hundred units, only three hundred something was built. But still, our performance is almost thirty percent, not point four percent as some community member has been saying. And we approved three and a half times more.
Vice Mayor Chow, I'm going to cut in right now. Sorry, just just hear me out here.
Yeah.
Get to a proposed agenda item soon, or else I'm going to cut you off. I'm sounding off.
My request
Yeah.
Here is that we need a website so that this kind of information is is from and centered. And then every staff presentation on housing element should start with, here is what we had in the current cycle, we have five projects, and they are all approved. Here is what they have been approved. Here's the table, second table, the performance. And I need the council's lessons to give so that we can
Okay.
Do I need to schedule this as some item?
I I think it wouldn't be a bad idea. I'd be happy to schedule it as at least an informational item with, you know, the ability to give direction to council on it. So or to, rather, so, okay, so, Councilmember Moore, you have your hand up again? Did you have?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Paul. Two items, one, I really appreciate what the vice mayor just said. I I would like to have that expanded to be website experience as a, because there are other things that I know that I have to take issue with on the website for how information is presented or where things are buried. And I think having a study session somehow that we can have a discussion, and we point out what, you know, why we want things a little bit differently. And I don't know if Councilmember Willie needs to have a second, but I'm looking at the City of Oakland Measure W, I'm liking what I'm seeing at first glance. And that is the, it is the vacant property tax. It's been in the works for a couple of years, and it looks pretty comprehensive. It goes to help homelessness, provide oversight and recommendations regarding, there's a, there's a commission on homelessness.
Councilmember Moore?
So I think
Give me a second, it will be sufficient for our purposes.
But there is something out there, is that we've got a resource, and I'm just kind of wondering if there's any possible way, if we are excited about this as a council, to get this on the ballot this year.
Okay, so see, now we have Vice Mayor Chow with a hand up. Well, we're going to end it here.
I related I to
You know, I'll give you twenty seconds, so so
One commissioner requested that there, maybe there could be an all commissioner chair meeting. So that between commission chairs, they have a chance to exchange information. Like the Western Valley Mayor's meeting, that's a request they have. Um, do we
I I have that duly noted, and I'm not calling you, Councilmember Moore, I'm sorry. Yeah, I I apologize for that, but we
You are seconding that?
I, well, it's not just a seconding, we did have an all commissions meeting once, and it was, it was great. So if that ever happens again, it was, it was really good things, and I, yeah, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. Jim, do you have anything for any staff updates before we close this out?
Nothing today, Mayor, but thank you for asking.
All right, thank you very much, Jim. And and Jim, great job in your first month and a half. I think this is probably your third full council meeting on your belt. Our city manager did point out, when we had our debrief meeting yesterday, in terms of expectations, I'll go ahead and repeat it here because we did go over this the middle of last year. If our meetings don't get done on Tuesday night, please be aware, whether you're a member of public or a member of staff or fellow council member, we are going to default to try to continuing it on Thursday of that same week. Okay, so, you know, you know, apologies for this particular item. I I didn't place it there, but it's at the very end of our, you know, agenda. And it necessarily implicates pretty much, you know, the entirety of our departments. And so I I think that's kind of unusual. But I don't, I don't think that it's necessarily going to be, you know, the very end items are going to, you know, need pretty much, you know, all representatives of staff in our departments there. But, yeah, just just for future purposes and make note of, we had conflicts on Wednesday, you know, in terms of availability, but Thursday is basically, we're not saying keep it open, but just understand that that might be a possibility, especially if an agenda looks, you know, fairly heavy. But otherwise, thank you, everyone. This is a short month, so we'll see you in a couple of weeks, a little bit less, you know, since this is a continued meeting. So in a week and five days, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting until our regular city council meeting of March first, two thousand twenty-two. Thanks a lot, and have a great night.
Thank you, everyone, for being here.